I will call this meeting to order of the Board of Selectmen in Millville, Massachusetts, on Monday, February 6, 2023, at 7:00 PM on the dock. Why don't we do a round of introductions in case anyone is new to watching? So we'll start with you, Rich.
Richard Remus.
Andrew Allard.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Caruso, Town Administrator.
And now we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So I'll start with new business. So I see Chief Coop and Keith Landigan. If you want to come up to the table, please.
Over to you, Chief. So I'm here this evening to present Keith Landigan. He's been with us since May as a part-timer. I'm here with him to get him appointed to full-time status. He has a diverse employment history, private and government sector. He's worked at numerous college police jobs, two of which unfortunately during his time there, they failed and had to close. A private sector, he was an armed guard with an armored car company. And he's got a well-rounded, he's got a well-rounded work experience. He's been doing well since he came back to us. And I would really hope that we could get him operational very soon. He just has to, after we get him squared away here with the appointment, if that's to be, then he just has to give his notice at his previous job, so.
Great, okay. So I reviewed your letter, and I agree with Chief Coop that you have quite a bit of experience and a lot of experience already being a police officer and a public safety officer, you know, across a wide range of organizations. So it's very thorough. I don't have any other questions. I don't know if Andrew or Richard does.
It seems like you're familiar with the town. You've been in the area for a while.
Oh, yeah. I grew up in this town. I went to third grade at Longfellow. I, my grand, my memé was born on Hope Street, and she passed away in November. But she passed away at her house on Miller Street in Millville. My grandfather was one of the first full-time firefighters ever appointed in this town and the murkier family. And yeah, I've been around here my entire life. I graduated from BMR in 1999. And I just, yeah, I raised, I lived on Providence Street. I lived on Lincoln Street, right off of SD Street, 35 Lincoln. Raised my two kids, and it's been a good town to me. I've seen this town, you know, with hustle and bustle of Millville to, you know, and I'm hoping it gets back to that again, you know? And I just like the tight-knit community, you know? It's like the old Mayberry, you know? You go down the street and everybody, yeah, you know? And a lot of people ask, well, how's it feel working in a town? You know everybody. I said, well, the pro is I know everybody, and the con is I know everybody. So it's just finding, it's finding the balance between being the neutral party when I go, you know? And I've already dealt with calls, people I know. And it's like, I'm here, I'm the neutral party, let's figure this out.
Yeah.
Well, with the vast college experience that you have, you should be, you know, you're probably used to that.
I have, yeah, like Dean College, six years. I was officer in charge and lost our job because we formed a union and they got rid of all of us.
Oh, yeah.
And back at college, I was hired, and two weeks after I was hired, they said they were closing. So out the window that went. And yeah, it's, I have my shit fair ups and downs, but you know, now things are swinging in a positive direction, and I look forward to coming here and helping Chief and helping the town best I can, so. Yeah. And also, I know a lot about autism, too. My son is a non-verbal autistic. He's 12. He lives residentially at a residential school locally. He goes to Evergreen. My girlfriend has two kids on the spectrum, and so I know a lot about mental health. And I worked at New Wellsley Hospital where I dealt with our psych floor most of the time. And yeah, so I have a lot of experience, a lot of experience.
Longwood, too.
It's Longwood, yeah. I worked at Longwood. I worked at Mission, actually, I worked in Mission Hill. So that was my area. Eight, I did 8:00 PM to 4:00 AM. And then I worked healthcare for the homeless, where I worked on Mass Ave and Albany Street with all the heroin addicts out there, daily basis, ODs after OD. And I'll tell you, that was the most depressing job I've ever had, was seeing just somebody's kids, somebody's, you know, somebody's grandkids, somebody's kids, you know, just out there, you know? And I don't think we're actually helping the situation out there any by giving them a safe spot to shoot up and all that, but you know, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, no, I just think this is one of those good examples of the Bridge Academy, part-timer Bridge Academy transitioning to full-time, right, Chief?
Absolutely.
I mean, I think this is great, and the system, somehow we're able to make it work here. I like that idea. And as far as you're dealing with some folks that might be different or challenging, you'll deal with that when you come talk to folks at town hall. No, just kidding. We're all good, easy to get along with.
You know, I'm that guy that goes and if somebody's playing basketball, I stop and play basketball. And I did that on West Street. Kids were out at a party. I stopped and I played basketball with them, and you know, and I moved on. I stopped, you know, Millville Heights. I had a sudden over there and met with some of the ladies that live there and was able to calm them down, use a little bit of humor, got them laughing a little bit. And now I make a stop over there frequently every other week when I see them sitting outside. And we made a joke that Mary, who lives down there, she, she's like, you should make me honorary down here. I'm like, yeah, 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 well, think about it. So I came back, and we have police officer stickers, which I carry in my pocket that I like to give out to the kids. I went down there and I gave one to Mary. She goes, can I put that on my car? Yeah, sure, stick it right on your car. So, you know?
That's awesome.
So I'm big on community policing. I love getting out and talking with people.
All right, sounds good. Anything, Andrew?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. So looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Keith.
Nope. Oh, yeah, that's right, sorry. Keith Landigan, yep, sorry. You're right.
I'll make a motion to appoint Keith Landigan as a full-time police officer through June 30th, 2023.
I'll second.
Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Richard. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. Richard?
Aye.
Aye. All right, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck, though, Chief.
We'll see you around the campus.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Take care.
So next item, consideration appointment of Zachary Echman to Conservation Commission through June 30th, 2025. Zachary, if you want to come up, please.
Hi. Hello. Zachary Echman.
So if you want to tell us, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the position.
Yes. So I don't know if you have the background information in front of you. Just to recap, beloved father of two children, seven-year-old son and six-year-old daughter. I have been a Millville resident of a .55 acre property along the Blackstone River since March 7th, 2018. That is a protected area under the Wetlands Protection Act. Since I've taken ownership and managed the property, protected wetland plants have started growing. So through the cleanup work that I've done, the property is in, is in better condition than it was before, and I do believe that there will be also, you know, more activity there in the future. I've been a volunteer for Community Impact since 2022. I am a volunteer motivational speaker of substance abuse and mental health recovery centers in Massachusetts since 2022. I was a team captain of Delsey Regional High School in New Jersey golf team. I was an officer in high school JRD C. I was a baptized Christian since 2015, and I'm working towards becoming an ordained minister. I'm an animal lover and nature enthusiast for more than 30 years, high school cultural student, and also have been actively since a gardener, raising livestock. I've reviewed and studied civil engineering plans since 2018, working towards learning about land surveying and, and land use. I've also studied real estate law and CMR since 2020. And I've studied, yeah, I got that one earlier. I've also, in my previous career as a technical support engineer for Siemens Industries, I was a process improvement and subject matter expert on the ACS 64 project with Amtrak. They were my customer. And I'm exemplary in moral character, ethics, and integrity. I have excellent communication skills and writing skills, and I'm proficient in Microsoft Office. And I believe that it's really important for us to have a revival to the Conservation Commission. I believe as a person that drinks his own well water, with filters obviously, it's really important that we educate our community and people that are involved in buffer zones. They should know, I have here some activities that are exempt if they're in a buffer zone with, obviously with approval. I would want to initiate some sort of outreach campaign in identifying the people that are in protected areas and buffer zones and possibly show them, you know, this flyer here. It's a little sheet, and it would kind of give them an idea of what is, you know, protected and kind of just to, you know, educate people on the importance of protecting clean, you know, the water and for our children and so that everybody is aware of wetlands serve a very important purpose. A lot of the plants have a function by design. They clean water. And in the process of, you know, the water being collected in certain areas, there are activities that could hinder and negatively impact the, you know, our drinking supply. And as a, you know, town that doesn't have town, you know, town water and no foreseeable future, it's really important that we keep the water clean and, and prevent people from unknowingly, you know, doing activities that could hinder that, that campaign that we, I think we need to revive the Conservation Commission. And I'm really excited to, if, that position, to do whatever I have to do in order to, to help us, you know, maintain that, that clean drinking water and also educate people.
So Richard, Andrew, do you have any questions or want to do the standard? I will start. That, that means they want me to start. So I guess, so I saw your, kind of your resume overview, which was great, but in your letter, you mentioned several things that I found really concerning, to be honest. So that you are, be filing a notice of intent, and you seem to have other legal things. I don't want to go into too much detail because I'm certainly not trying to cause any embarrassment or anything like that. But all of that I found really concerning because we need to have kind of, you know, I mean, I don't know if you can have a clean slate living in a small town, but as much as you can have one. Because there's a lot of thoughts around someone being biased or someone being friends with someone or someone having favorites and things like that, and we need to avoid that, I think, at all costs. So I think if there is more distance between this, like over time, I might feel more comfortable where this is all happening like right now, that makes me very uncomfortable. So I don't know if Andrew or Richard have any other thoughts.
No, I agree, really. Yeah. I think your letter is very informative, and I certainly don't want to dive into and I guess talk about it on public TV.
Yeah, exactly.
So I think you've been very forthcoming and given a lot of information, but I think we need to create some distance.
Yeah, I would echo my colleagues' points as well.
So I'm not inclined to call for a vote unless someone else wants to. Would you be able to?
Uh, no.
Okay. So I appreciate you stepping forward, Zachary. I think if, like in a year or two, once we put some distance and things are fully resolved.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, definitely feel free to come forward. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I could, I appreciate you coming and, you know, respectful the way you've appeared tonight before the board. I think that's great, and I do think it's great you did share your details and I, you know, you understand the board. It's a very important decision for them to make. It's, it's good to hear your passion because I, I think it's important that all the things you described are part of what, you know, as an outsider, doesn't seem to exist as much as it probably should and could. But there are matters that, you know, that I think they, Dan talked around a bit, and some of which looks like might come to some resolution.
Yep.
And maybe the timeframe changes, so who knows? And, and the needs change. But so that's just for me because I'm the conduit of him being here tonight, and I just wanted to express my appreciation for your.
My personal views, I like to focus more education than enforcement, so I think that's what I kind of look for. So it's kind of one of those things, we want to inform the public, yeah.
Well, thank you for coming out. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you want to go home, we understand that, too.
I've got to go get some preparation to.
Yep, totally get it.
You have a busy schedule, that's right. You have something tomorrow.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of work.
Okay. Have a good night.
Thank you, board members. You guys have a great day.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
You, too. Thank you. Okay, so moving to consideration. Consideration part of Eric Olson, so I don't see him here?
No, he was invited, you know, he's been on the board, the commission, in the past.
Yep.
But I don't know if any of you know him.
I don't know him.
I may have met him, but.
I don't know if I know him.
So.
I don't.
It would be nice maybe to have him here.
Yes. It's part of our policies that you need to be here to be appointed. So, so as soon as he, you know, we can keep it on the agenda.
Yeah, table it.
Yeah, we can table it.
Okay.
Okay. So appointment of alternate delegate to CMR PC for the fiscal year 2023, Pam Maloney.
That's correct. So CMR PC requires that the, asks for the planning board to appoint a delegate, and they've appointed a delegate, Pam Williams, and that the Board of Selectmen appoint an alternate delegate who can be a resident, but happens to be a resident and a planning board member, which is double. And Pam has served in this role as the alternate delegate in the past, so.
Yeah.
This seems like a pretty good move.
So it should be maybe reappointment.
She's will, that's correct, and she's willing to do it.
Okay. Because I want people to think like, why did you reappoint Pam and take the vote and not let's process? Because, well, we know Pam and it's a reappointment.
We're very familiar with Pam.
Yes, and I'm not familiar with Eric, just in case anyone asks. Andrew, are you comfortable with a reappointment of Pam?
Reappointments are fine.
Okay. So looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to reappoint Pam Maloney as an alternate delegate to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for fiscal year 2023.
I'll second.
Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Richard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Richard?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. All right. Thank you, Pam, for taking on one more job in Millville.
Issey Lady.
That's a lot of hats.
It's a lot of hats. I don't, she obviously doesn't sleep, like that's.
Yeah, it just can't be possible.
Just keeps it.
But she does a great job in wearing every one of those hats.
Amazing. It's amazing.
I will say, yeah.
Yes, okay. But so budget and capital planning update? Peter, I'll turn it over to you.
Yep, so I just, I provide a lot of materials in your packet, but that's just for reference, okay? I want to go over the two-pager that's in there of sort of summary bullet points. That's what I thought I would do. I did go through this with the Finance Committee last Thursday evening, okay? And so I'm basically doing a retake of that, which is just to give everybody, give you all an idea, you know, some of the challenges that we might be facing for fiscal '23, which shows up in the reference material of the, you know, through December 31st, Budget to Actual Report. And, and then think ahead to some of the things that look like we might be dealing with in the budget cycle that we're really just entering into. So as you, as you recall, I put out a guidance letter, and you all saw it and approved it, and it basically was saying, you know, 3% on the salary increases or contractual increases prevail on compensation. And, you know, basically, level funding on everything else unless there are contractual or other specifically supportable needs. So the budget spreadsheets have gone out by the town accountant, and they're due back this Friday, actually, from the department heads, and then there'll be a compilation, and then we'll see where we're at. And so that process, you know, under your bylaws, I present to you folks a recommended budget, and then you work with that, and the same one that I present to you will be sent to the Finance Committee. Finance Committee makes the recommendations at town meeting. In the past, sometimes the Board of Selectmen have slightly different numbers than the Finance Committee, but.
The last two years, they matched.
Last two years, you've matched, so I hope we see the same thing again.
I don't know, the chair of the Finance Committee, he's a big pain in the butt.
He's challenging, yeah. He's challenging, yes. I don't know that, I couldn't live with him, I'll tell you that.
It's tough.
Yeah. But I'll also remind, you know, you and anybody paying attention, you know, that Millville votes for department totals, which is all the salaries and expenses combined. And so the line items and anything you see in a year-to-date analysis or in the budget analysis going forward is not the critical thing, it's the total. And so there's some flexibility to move around within things, and I'll talk briefly about that. That said, it is important to still keep an eye on the line items because there's a reason for those. They, you know, they're part of the total, so I'll just say that. So when I go through the year-to-date and look for, looking ahead on things, you know, assessors, we have outsourced assessor, we have a contract. I think they're built in with a 3% increase on that contract for next year. We are a little, it looks like we're a little bit light, it turns out, on some of the GIS mapping software technology. So that's a couple of grand that needs to be budgeted, and we might have some exposure on between now and the year end, you know, transfers that might be required. I don't know that for a fact, but we'll see. So I just put that in there. Technology, you know, needs a closer look for next year's budgeting, just because it seems a little light what we've historically done. Town clerk, you know, she'll follow guidance, but she is requesting, she's already submitted her request, and she's asking for doubling up the hours on her assistant from eight to 16, and that adds another six grand to the budget. But from my perspective, what I would recommend to you on something like that, depends on the total and where we have, you know, I'll assess priority, priorities from my vantage point, identify them to you as, and you work with those as, you know, you see fit. Planning, this year, you know, we had 25 grand in there for planning payroll, if you will, and, and/or IMA costs, intermunicipal agreement costs. We're now subject to an intermunicipal agreement. There will be some costs, but the bulk of what was put in there for this fiscal year will not be used. And so there's an opportunity for a resource of, should we have to transfer money to another budget. I think what's going to be in there for next year will be appropriate based on the IMA. And I've met the new junior planner who serves the town Dillon and very professional, capable, competent, and I think will work out great.
Great.
So I'm excited there. Town Hall, that falls under my bailiwick, and, you know, there's a whole bunch of different line items in there, some of which provide some, need some closer scrutiny, like utilities and how we do the grounds and rentals and leases and things like that. But I think we're both good overall, if not some opportunity there, for example, in the Town Hall administrative payroll line. You know, what we've budgeted in there was for a full-time position on administrative, additional administrative staff, where we only have a part-timer working there for, for the time being. So anyway, I think we're good there. Police, again, okay overall. As you know, we added additional compensation for the retention and recruitment efforts that we did, that is being covered by the budget in terms of open positions, you know, particularly in the, open in the full-time positions. We, you all just filled one. But again, that's evolving, what the needs are, and so Chief Coop, you know, will be, I'm sure you'll meet with Chief Coop on that. I'll be helping him kind of figure out what's the right thing on the various compensation line items, as well as some of the things that I think he's got to deal with in terms of telecommunications and software.
He's managing his budget very well.
But he does do a good job of managing his budget, and he's doing it without, you know, he doesn't have Trish. He has, you know, part-time help that is helping him out, which is Blaine Shepard, right, who's retired. So he's giving him a dozen hours a week or so and doing a great job on some of the administrative stuff, but he really does need help there. You know, talk further about that. We got to find him the right level of help on that.
Well, the situation with Blaine is working, I mean.
It is working, but it's not enough. He's still, you know, not everything is as right as it could be, and he seems to have, you know.
Is he not interested in the full-time?
Well, Blaine can't do it. He's retired, so he has to keep under a certain number of hours, so he's not, he's prohibited from that. So it is working. I don't know how long he'll be able to do it or how, you know, as you get into the summer, and I don't, you know.
He has a cap of so many thousands of hours.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, because otherwise it affects his pension.
Correct. He has to pay back. Yeah, it's like $2 for every dollar that you owe.
Yeah, so anyway, we'll see. The other thing that's in his budget, in the chief's budget, is a capital lease, as you recall, 15 grand. That's a carryover item that currently isn't being utilized, so that's some opportunity for this year in terms of turnback or otherwise. It's also a resource that could be used to extend. He's going to come to the Capitol Committee for a cruiser and, and possibly admin car, and that's on the schedule. So that might be a source of the funding. So when a motion's made at town meeting, it can be out of public safety stabilization and maybe 15K out of this line item as a, you know, funding source. But we, we haven't done the capital stuff on that. I'm just putting that out there. There's things to keep in the back of your mind. I think where some of the other challenges will be Chief Lillard and how he budgets. He mentioned that he might want to add another full-time firefighter or EMT position. I don't know that yet. I don't think he knows that yet, but it's something to think about. He clearly has challenges this year on the line items, the, you know, the part-timers amount that's budgeted. And if you remember last year's budget, this year's budget cycle, he had looked for more resources, but he, he didn't bang the table enough, is how I would describe it, and so.
Didn't we add $38,000, though?
No, I don't think we did, no.
Did we do a year-end transfer of $38,000?
Well, oh, he did a year-end transfer last year, and we might have to do one this year, I'm not sure. Okay. But we did do a, the other piece of it is the maintenance side, so he's going to probably, I'm expecting he's going to add more. He mentioned like 10 grand to the maintenance. And here you have two big trucks that the town purchased economically in the past and continues to run them. In other towns, they're replacing them at a more frequent cycle. The goal is to keep those running and carefully maintain. And there was a big maintenance bill last year that had to have a reserve fund transfer. It was like, it was 30-something grand for that, you know, unforeseen maintenance, but.
Yeah, that I'm okay with. If I thought it was a salary thing, because I mean, if you look at where he is right now, so he has fire professional salaries.
Right.
I'm sorry, fire other regular salaries of 84, and he spent 51, and of the EMT part has 93, spent 52.
Yep, and this should be a 50%. It's like half the year.
So he should have spent 44 and 46, five. So it's not too bad, to be honest, maybe, you know, anything under 10%, I think is kind of noise, like budgets. But we'll have to look at that.
But, but he's, you know, like he's used up all his repair and maintenance essentially, right? The 30 grand down there, that's used up.
That's out of his control, though.
That is out of his control.
In my opinion, so, yeah.
Yeah. So all, I, so when I do my review, I call that exposures, you know, those types of things to, to keep in mind. And, and you look at those exposures, you want to be sure you try to factor those in because I think at the end of the day, in something like the, you know, the police and fire, you want to budget for reality.
Yes.
You, you can't make a, a budget that you know is not gonna work, right? And Millville, in spite of it all, does seem to get a lot of public safety support with its limited...
Yes.
...coverage and staffing and all of that, you know?
No, they're doing a great job. I really like Chief Lillard and Chief Coop. And if Chief Lillard needs to ask for more money, I mean, I think we're, 'cause we've been seeing a twenty-thousand-dollar swing, so if that happens again, then we should get a surplus of thirty thousand. So, and then we'll have to see how the cannabis revenues work out as well, so we might have...
Yeah, so I'll be touching on that a bit.
We might have an opportunity to...
We might, we might.
Do a little bit better there.
We might.
Maybe, no making any promises, we should probably not record that part.
No.
She has money, she said.
No. So, I, I just keep going down the list real quickly. Building, the stipends there might be a little tight, you know, to the tune of a couple of grand from reality, so we wanna be sure that's right. Animal control, we're under an intermunicipal agreement. This year, we're fine. I don't know what the budgeting for next year will be, but this year, we had the benefit in the overall picture of which we are four percent, I think, or eight percent of a grant for this year that was applied and offset some of the costs. At the same time, they doubled up or, or added two vehicles, so the capital side. So, next year, I don't know, let's hope it's not a, it won't be a big change, but it'll be, might be more than we're budgeted this year. Tree warden, I think we'll probably, you know, level fund that, essentially, and this year, we, you all approved the ARPA thirty K, so we'll get back to that. The communications, we have that open, that's where Trish's payroll line was captured in the past, okay? So, you have an open position there, part-time filled by Blaine. Also, you know, I have a meteocommit meeting Wednesday morning where we're going over the FY24 budget. I think the real cost to Millville has been covered, you know, the real cost, the cost to Millville has been covered by state nine-one-one grants, a hundred percent, and it's in the first two or three years of our relationship, and we're in, right now, basically part of year two. They still have a question yet to be resolved of when the meter starts of the thing, because they didn't provide services until August, but the deal was supposed to be effective of that January, so there's an eight-month play there that, I'll be trying to make sure it doesn't, the meter doesn't start till August, is where I'm at. But in any event, the Millville share of the cost of those operations is a hundred and ten grand or so. And so, in the next couple of years, Millville's piece of that will have to be fifty percent, state nine-one-one will only cover fifty percent. So, that, that's gonna be an item to be layered into the budget at some point in the not-too-distant future, so I'm just pointing that out, heads up. MES water, I think it's okay as budgeted, we got some changes planned, yet, I don't know the amounts yet, but for changing the nature of the way the water's treated, for, to use a much better chemistry technology, is how I'll simply describe it, and that would result in less needs for testing and things like that, so we'll see. BVT, we don't know the number of students, nor cost per student. There's a joint meeting currently penciled in for April third where Doc and Jerry would come, Jerry Finn would come to the board here and hopefully get somebody from the finance committee. So, I, I saw something from the superintendent, you know, Doc, regarding one student down, but I don't know that for a fact, and that would benefit us. I'll circle back to BMR. Norfolk Aggie, you know, there's a crapshoot till you get to the end of the year, knowing the number of students, and that can swing wildly, right? But this year, we're okay on the tuitions, transportation, overall in that budget, we're fine. The transportation is much higher than even was budgeted, because the rates went up considerably. So, that's just a hard one to project. We, only at the very end of the budget cycle do we get the students that actually are supposed to be going, and even then, that's subject to change after town meeting, frankly. Likewise, Tri-County, we had a number of students identified, we budgeted for those, turns out none went. So, we have a huge opportunity this year, I call opportunity, turnback opportunity or reclass opportunity. So, who knows where that's gonna be. Highway, you know, he hasn't used, Brian hasn't used much of that budget, I think Jen and I are meeting with him Wednesday afternoon, so I'm excited of that. He's also got RAP funds. So, he hasn't used a lot of the road materials this, this year so far, and we'll see what he thinks his needs are next year on that. Snow and ice, again, you know, we're, we haven't had a lot, but they have been sanding and treating the roads, and so there's charges that have gone through there, but not major storms, but it is still winter, so we'll see. Town fuel, we're gonna be challenged this year and next year to come up with the right number. I think it's really this year's the big challenge and then trying to sort of track on a similar rate for next year, would be my guess. Streetsweep and stormwater, those we find out towards the end of the year, and Brian typically puts in on that, what he, what, what we're gonna need. Streetlights, we're gonna be good, from what I can see. Council on Aging, I don't know what their needs are, but Tina was talking about, and they're clearly tracking their van usage is higher than budgeted, so that might need to be supplemented. And, and there's a real demand there and real usage, it's, you know, and I have no sense that there's any abuse of the usage, right? So, that's something to think about. Veterans, there are some benefits that have been paid, and there's some more, I think, forthcoming, and that you don't know, sometime, years, there's nothing, some years, there could be some. We get seventy-five percent back from the state in a subsequent year, and it's a revenue line item, it doesn't offset the budget line item, so we put in what we put in, kind of, almost like we're budgeting for snow and ice, right, where we put a number and then we deficit spend it, right? Veterans is more gonna be year-end transfers or whatever to meet needs if we go over, I think it's like ninety-eight-hundred bucks or something, this budget on that line item. Library, I don't know of anything and I don't see any challenges. Health retirement, health retirement and other benefits, I'm sure the health cost will go up. Maya, we, we do our health insurance through Maya, and the last couple of cycles, they whacked us at their highest rate increases, and last I heard, their rate increase, the highest rate increase that they're looking at is around ten percent on the premium costs, and we share seventy-five, twenty-five or seventy-thirty, depending on the, who, who we're talking about. Police are seventy-thirty. So, anyway, unknown, but in the retirement, that typically seems to grow faster than, certainly Proposition Two and a Half, so they tell us the number and we put that in, and we gotta find a way to pay for. On revenues, those are to be determined, we won't know what state aid's gonna be until somewhere in March, because the governor, new governor has until March first to put in a budget, and she hasn't put anything in yet and won't until then. But the real thing is the marijuana impact fees and how we treat that. And I think, and we talked briefly about that a little bit, I, you know, still think hard about what I might put in there, and I'm thinking, where we've tracked is, we're a hundred and twenty grand thereabouts a year on just the Garden Wonders impact fees and the like amount, basically, on the local option sales tax. And so, I'll probably put in a hundred and a hundred, where last year, I put in seventy-five and seventy-five. I don't think it makes any sense to not forecast the impact fees, 'cause we got a deal, we're getting the money, and if we have to give something back for some crazy reason, better to take it out of a stabilization and, and use it in the rev, is what I'm thinking, and I think that's where I'll wind up. I don't know that I put anything in for lifted luxury at this stage, but lifted luxuries operations, if they go, have to go, starting October fifth or eighth or whatever the date was, that you put as a deadline in this fiscal year, so that, so we might wanna factor for that, 'cause that's really where some of the squish factor comes in to cover additional, in addition to the new growth and the two and, Proposition Two and a Half. We don't have any other sources of revenue other than some limited state aid. Free cash, we don't know, I'm meeting with the town accountant and the treasurer, we're gonna try to get together next week to see what Tara needs from Jane on the treasury side, and Jane will readily provide that. I did include in there, you know, some stabilization, latest stabilization, and I'm still gonna circle back to the school briefly, BMR. But the latest stabilization, Millville has like almost one-point-five-seven million bucks in OPEB trust fund and stabilization accounts, so very healthy, and this is as of six-thirty-twenty-two, so there'll be some more public safety, ambulance fees, fifty percent goes into that stabilization fund, so that's all good. Capital, the capital, we're gonna meet, looks like probably on the twenty-eighth. Sent out letters and forms for people to fill out, request forms, we'll see what folks need. On BMR, you, you, there's, remind you that there's a joint meeting at Hartnett Middle School Monday night, the thirteenth, seven o'clock, okay? And, you know, there's a slide deck that Jason and I sat down, he went over with me, that he's presented to the, to the school board, school committee. I don't know if he's changed it, I think they were having a workshop today where they go through their budgets and all of that. But he'll go through this, it's just in here as a reference thing, a couple of things that I thought worth pointing out, so I, I wrote a few notes. Right now, what, what is in the slide deck, what they're showing is a three-point-eight percent overall total cost increase, okay? Yet to be determined what the state contribution will be to offset, yet to be determined what the minimum local contributions of the towns are, yet to be determined what the assessment to each town might be. But the three-point-eight gives you an idea of the overall, and some of the drivers in there on that are, they, they're doing some stuff with technology, they have, of course, their contractual increases, they have, and the technology, they've got personnel and they've got some software that adds to it, they've got their utilities are adding, they've got benefit increases, and their benefit increases are twofold. One, that they have had some retirements and they've filled the positions with younger, newer teachers who are entering onto the health plan that weren't there before, and they are on the higher rate of increase, I think, at this stage. They got some, they've done a good job on transportation, negotiation for the outer district stuff, but they do have tuitions and increases, and they can talk more about that, hopefully, at the meeting next week. It's yet to be determined whether they include OPEB, you know, they have a hundred grand OPEB, again, like we did last year. The question is whether it's, it's not in the budget currently, and so that's still, not in their budget currently, we had it in our budget, so I would expect to see it there. We also have the asbestos remediation, will be in their capital budget, and you've already approved that it's gonna be funded out of ARPA, so that would be at the motion for the, at town meeting of the source of funding not to be raised by taxes. They have an increase in the capital cost for the boiler, because they've now bonded the MES boiler project, so it means that we're paying not only just interest, previously we were paying just interest, now we'll be paying principal, and that's about twenty grand. So, that capital piece to us is, excuse me, increased by that. Key things over there, you know, they've had some enrollment declines, and so one of the questions is student-teacher ratios and whether there was a tracking those enrollment declines. I did get a copy just today of the signed contract for, you know, that has steps and lanes, it's not just a cola, it's cola on top of steps and lanes, and, you know, that, that adds up pretty quickly, so that's worth knowing about. I, I do, you know, I'm not thrilled about the way they handle the OPEB and other legacy liabilities, you know, those are big liabilities, and in my view, from the capital seat I sit in as well, you know, if they wanna talk about a big project funding a big school project, you gotta factor in that you got, you know, last year was forty-three and a half million dollars of unfunded OPEB obligation, as of the end of this year, it's anticipated to be a million and eight higher. So, if you throw a hundred grand at that, you're, it's a rounding error, but that's just me going on my high horse, okay? But nonetheless, they have significant legacy liabilities. They also have challenges of the students that they're dealing with, and that's very compelling, high-needs students, forty-three percent of their students are high-needs, either need food or they need special services of one sort or another. They're, they get circuit breaker money on the outer district students, and some communities, you know, bud, some, back in my Sherburne days, Dover Sherburne days, they didn't, they budgeted none of that, and they use it as a turnback to cover unanticipated needs. We, we wound up budgeting a portion of it. Here, they're budgeting a hundred percent of it, so it's, there's not a lot of room for error, I guess is what I would call it. They're using a hundred-and-fifty grand of E and D, and so that's my BMR synopsis of what, things to think about. You know, the only other thing I'd say on the enrollments and student-teacher stuff ratios, I, I like the idea, I call it the parking lot test. If you just go drive by the parking lot, look for the number of cars in the parking lot, count them. Take out some for a reasonable amount for, you know, cafeteria and, you know, maintenance and who knows what. And then divide, divide, take the number of students that are in that building and divide it by the remaining number of cars, that gives you a rough idea of professional staff per student. That's just a ballpark.
Yeah.
Simple way to look at it.
I would like to get historic, I'm gonna send a note to Dr. DeFalco, because I would like to understand how enrollment has changed, maybe since twenty-seventeen till now, and then how the te, number of teachers has changed over that same time period. Because I, you know, we've certainly made a lot of belt-tightening decisions in Millville to make sure that we can support our budget without an override, 'cause that has not been anything that someone, that the town's been interested in, and we have funded our OPEB. I mean, I know ours is way smaller, but we do make an effort to put in, you know, fifty thousand dollars against that liability, too, so it's, I want to see that information. I mean, and we have, I know Peter, in the meeting, we've talked about putting something more than a hundred thousand, I think, and I think I gave, like, in a meeting, I'll have to go back, and I said, what if we did this much?
Over time.
Like, we did two-fifty, did it like two-fifty for a couple of years, for like five, and then went to three-hundred and then five-hundred, and then got it to like a million, and like, but in a dozen years, not just like, bam, a million dollars this year. It would be like, let's slowly shift it to a higher number, because it could be a really, really big problem for the community, if someone's like, alright, you're gonna need to pay this bill right now. Like, I don't know what we would give them.
I would just say it is a big problem. Whenever you have debt, that should be the first priority, because if that ha, if somebody comes knocking for that debt, it's over. You're not gonna be like, oh, here's, here's money, you know? That's, that's the first priority in anything, I mean, you can't run a school if you're, close the doors, because you can't pay your retirees or anything like that, so.
Anything on your end, Richard?
Okay. So, there is no old business, I see on the agenda, so let's skip. And then, so I see Diane here, why don't we skip to five A. So, town clerk approved new polling place location, Millville Senior Center, forty Prospect Street, and an update on election process, elected and appointing positions open. Diane, over to you.
Okay. Well, I, as you know, I am recommending that we switch our polling place since St. Augustine's is now closed and we can't be there anymore. It was very nice of them to let us still go there for the last two times, so I am recommending that we move to the senior center. I did a, you know, kind of looked around and I was, it was this place or, or there, and I'm worried about the exit here. People, I, I think there'd be a head-on collision, honestly, at some point, and I don't want that to happen. Over on Prospect Street, we have a go-in one way, come-out one way, we have a little bit of extra parking where the election workers could park to open up all of the spaces for the people coming in to vote. Even if it got crowded, people could park on the right-hand side of Prospect Street and, you know, walk in. There's handicapped accessibility, it meets all the criteria, it's got a nice big room. So, that, that's my recommendation, and if you all agree, I would be happy to send all the letters out to the res, the residents that are registered voters, to tell them that we have now changed our polling location. I'll put it into the voter registration system and put it on the website and all that stuff.
Okay.
You'd just have to take a vote and let me know.
Any questions for Diane?
One quick question. Has the senior center or the council on aging been informed about this?
I talked to the senior center, I talked to Tina, and that's when I did the walkthrough and made sure everything looked good. It is a public building, and I explained to Tina exactly what would happen. She said that there are usually no meetings, our, our elections are on Mondays for the town, and there's only that one this year. And I reminded her that all of the other, the state elections are held on Tuesdays, and she was fine with that, so...
You can make accommodations?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah. Yeah, and, yeah.
Yep, so my main, not really concern, but just point, I guess, would be since the Council on Aging is in control of that building, and they had on previous occasions refused, I just want to know if they, it's going to be a problem this time, if we need to get their approval for, to use the building.
They had to vote on it?
Yeah, they had to vote on it. Because when we left the Old Town Hall, they, the thought was to move there temporarily, and they voted against doing that. So that's why I just want to see if we need to work.
So what if you did a motion tonight to approve this subject to Council on Aging approval or some such thing? And, you know, I think that would be the way to go. And then they can, at their next meeting, if they don't go against it, you know, we, we know where they live.
Yeah.
If they go against. But that's the way, I think you're.
Just in case.
Yep.
Yeah, I think you're prudent.
Okay, so looking for a motion?
Motion to approve a new polling location of Millville Senior Center, 40 Prospect Street, with the subsequent approval of the Council on Aging.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Say no, no, call for the vote. Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Okay, great. Is there any other update or anything you need to share for B? For what? B, sorry, two on the agenda, B2. It says update on election process, elected and appointed positions open.
Oh, well, I mean, the election process is, a lot of it is the same. You know, I get nomination papers, open it up to, in January for nomination papers. Send letters to all of the incumbents asking if they, you know, tell them when the nomination papers are available and come in and get them. The number of signatures we need is 20 because of the, how many people vote at the November elections for governor, gubernatorial thing. And it's a percentage, and we'll never probably have to go over 20 signatures, which is the minimum that you can get anyway. I always recommend that people get 24 or 25 in case somebody that's not a registered voter might sign. After that, they hand them back in to me. We check all the signatures in the voter registration, make sure the registered voters that signed the nomination papers. And then we take all of those and I create the ballot. And then I have to get it so that it goes on to the, the, we have to have another ballot made up for the electronic voting for the handicapped accessibility. Get that done and send out all of the people who want either early voting ballots or absentee ballots. And there is a difference. Absentee ballots, you have to have a reason for wanting an absentee ballot. You have to either be unable to attend the election or you maybe will be out of town or whatever, and you have to actually sign an affidavit saying that. Early voting, you don't need an excuse. You just tell me you wanted a ballot, you put that in writing, and I mail it out to you. And then we have the election. That's pretty much it. The warrant gets posted at least seven days prior, that's Mass. General Law. I usually try and get it posted two weeks before because I like to get it done.
That's a warrant these, the Board of Selectmen approve, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so that'll be on my future meeting.
That warrant will be coming up in a few weeks after. I, I just have to get in all the nomination papers and know who's going to be on the ballot. And then I get the warrant ready. Not that their names are on the ballot, but I just like to have it all that in before I give you the warrant. Get everything done, have you guys sign the warrant, get it posted, and we're good.
What's the last day they have to submit their nomination papers, Diane?
February 13th, it's a week from today. We will be open until 5:00 PM.
Oh, that was actually one of my questions.
Yes, open until 5:00 PM. Yes, of course you may.
And you can have more than two positions.
Two positions?
Can you run from two positions?
You can run more than run two positions, right?
Yeah.
Well, can, you can? So you could be on, let me see, so you could be on Board of Selectmen and?
If I wanted to be, I could be the Town Clerk and I could run for Board of Selectmen if I wanted to. There are Town Clerks out there that have done that. No, thank you.
That's an excellent idea.
Well, you see, I.
I do need more diversity.
I have plenty of diversity in my life, thank you very much.
But we need more diversity.
You need more diversity.
On the Board of Selectmen.
I thought you were saying I do, no, I have plenty.
I'm all alone here, Diane.
I see what you're saying. However, I would have to take a huge cut in pay if I became a Selectman.
Oh, you can, but I thought you said you could be the Town Clerk too.
Oh, I am, I am. But I would have to give up some of my teaching and, you know, that's my second job.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you would get the compensation the Selectmen get.
Oh, that is a nice.
That's a fortune, isn't it?
That's a great salary.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going on vacation with this year.
In my own house.
Exactly. Back to quarantining.
Only salary not affected by inflation.
That's right, okay.
Okay, so anyway, that's, that's the election schedule and what we do for that. And then we were, I was also asked to talk about appointed positions.
Yep.
So on the website, I put this, appointed positions. I photocopied that and stuck it on the website. So it's on the front page of our website. And it just says, you know, vacancies and appointed positions and such. And it has all of the different positions on here. The only one that's missing is green energy.
Green Communities Committee.
Yeah, we've talked about that one.
Yeah, and we, I believe that's a three-person committee, and we don't have anybody on it. So, yeah. And then also on the website, I put appointed positions and what I had listed as vacancies. And keep in mind that my information is only as good as what I am told.
Yep.
Right? So there may be errors, if there are, let me know, and I will fix it. And then on the back, I've got the elected positions that are open for the April 3rd. That's also on the website. So anybody who wanted to know what's open. I would like to remind anybody who's watching this or listening or goes on in the future that all resignations, whether it's appointed or elected, need to be given to the Town Clerk in writing.
Yes.
Okay, so if somebody comes in and said, oh, so-and-so is no longer a member of such-and-such a board or committee, and I did not get that in writing with a signature, a wet signature, one in.
So email will not cut it?
I prefer no emails. You can write a resignation, sign it, take a picture of it, and send it to me via email if you don't want to drop it off at the Town Hall. But it really needs to have a wet signature on it and given to the Town Clerk. We don't accept hearsay.
Yes, I support that. So, yes, we have to, I mean, what are you supposed to do? I heard at church that someone said that he's not coming to meetings anymore. And we can't go by what people hear wherever.
I heard, I heard the Town Clerk wants to be a Selectman.
And we already discussed that, yes. And, and thank you for, you know, inviting me to run, but no.
I don't think you have to run very hard.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, there we go.
Okay.
Any, any other questions that you might have for me?
No?
No?
I don't think so.
No, she's my favorite Town Clerk, and I'm very happy to see you here tonight. That's great, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I will put a plug in for my budget, which I am told I'm the first and only so far to have submitted, maybe. Hearsay, mind you, but that's just what I heard through the grapevine. Okay, so I really am encouraging the fact that I want more hours for an Assistant Town Clerk because I am starting to get a wee bit older. And when I finally decide to retire, it would be really good to have somebody here that knows what's going on so that when somebody else gets the Town Clerk position, whether it be the, an Assistant that decides to run or somebody else decides to run and then has the Assistant to help, might be a good idea.
Transition plan.
Yes, it takes a lot of time to, and, and I will tell you that the state, every year, gives us more and more and more to do. Yeah. So it would be a really good, good thing, in my opinion, it would be very helpful to the town to have somebody in this position that I can train to the best of my ability to know what they're doing, so when I.
Diane was pleading her case to me today, and she was showing me some form or something, requirements by the state that she got, it's not this, but she, but she was at, she got it at some boondoggle, Town Clerk boondoggle. Last week, I asked her, well, what, were your meetings all at the spa or what? And she paid attention and she learned stuff. And, but I, I would say the gist of it is you, there's more to do every year from the way these people operate.
Yes, I mean, from the time that they made us records access officers, if nobody else was willing to do it in your town, which of course then it fell onto me.
Right.
From there, it's been just a, you know, incremental, yeah, now you're going to do this, and now you're going to do that, and this law has changed, and that law has changed. And it's a lot to know, a lot to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate you asking too, because actually Peter and I were talking that if you want for, and I guess this is a notice to all department heads, if you want more in your budget, you have to ask us for it. So we're not good guessers or mind readers. So some department heads, they come every, I want more. But if you don't ask and just say, oh, I know they're going to say no. So we don't want to say no, but we have to look at what we have in our piggy banks. But if you don't ask, I guarantee you will not get it.
Right, right.
So you need to ask.
And the other thing on top of asking for more hours for my assistant is that the trainings that I go to, I can go to trainings and I can bring stuff back, but it's not like being there and actually hearing it for yourself. So I also increase the amount for going to conferences. I doubled it because if I go, I want my assistant to also be able to go. And we can take separate classes or, you know, and she can, you know, I'll figure out what I think is more important. Stuff that maybe is new to her that I hadn't really expanded upon and, you know, him or her, whoever is rated currently, it's a her, but you never know what's going to happen in the future. So that is also why my, that part of my budget has increased. Thinking that, you know, it would be best for both of us to go so the Assistant would get the knowledge also.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good. Anything else for Diane before we let her go?
The change in polling place, will that have to be posted by Constable?
I will have you post that, and, but I also have to, by law, I have to send it out to every household that had registered, that has registered voters in it.
Correct.
Yes. But when we post the warrant, it will also be on there. And if we can get this sign working here, it is out of order right now. If we can get it back up and running, which I've been trying to do, it'll be posted there also. New polling location, you know, of course pending the.
Approval from the COA.
Yes, and I really hope that they're fine with it because we're not asking for a lot. We're just asking for one day.
Two days a year.
This year, three, three days next year, four, four actually. Because next year, we have a presidential primary in March. We have our, ours in April. Then we have another primary in September, and then the presidential in 2024. So there'll be four in, you know, next.
Busy?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Never a dull moment. Yeah, okay.
Thank you so much.
So you can't leave until I give you, because you didn't know this. I have to date and timestamp this in front of you.
Oh, okay.
The person who hands it in, and it has to be in red, and I don't have my red pen with me right at the moment.
Okay.
And then I have to give you a receipt.
Okay.
Okay, so, don't run away.
I, we have more agenda items.
Okay.
So don't worry.
So I will, I will leave this here and just pop in and put that on there and give you your receipt.
Sounds good, thank you. Okay, so highway update, so I'll give a little bit and then Peter will. So we're going to meet with Brian Mulally on Wednesday. I met with him last week, can't remember what day it was, Tuesday, I think. And we talked about road repairs, because if you remember on the stabilization accounts that Peter handed out, we have very healthy stabilization accounts. And from the survey from the townspeople, they talked about, what's the, fix the roads? Now, I will say, the person I know in the finance community makes fun of me because I was like, oh my God, everyone's so mad about roads. He's like, everyone in Massachusetts is so mad about roads. The roads all around Massachusetts are terrible. We get snow, they get ripped up, that's what happens. So that made me feel a little bit better because I did look at other town pages and they're, everyone is unhappy with their roads. But we have to look at maybe stuff with what free cash looks like. So I don't want to like, I'm hoping that what we take out, we're going to be replacing right away. But we might want to consider, he gave me a couple quotes. So for example, if we were to do all Providence Street, that'd be $300,000. Hill Street was between 300 and 350. I was shocked that it was more, but it was. And then to do Old Chestnut Hill Road, which I know is like off the path, but buses go down that road, that was like 100,000. So we have warp funds, which Peter and I will talk to about. Rap funds. Warp funds, rap funds, rap funds. That has about 100,000 in there. So we could use that for Old Chestnut Hill Road. And then if our free cash looks like it's going to be around 300, then we could put that to one of the other roads. And then we can look at next year too, what it's going to look like. But I thought, because we have 1.5 million dollars and we want to save it for rainy days, but the, you know, part of it is also to invest in infrastructure in our community that's going to last and make it better. And so I think, it's just something to think about. We should think about maybe looking at a road, especially if free cash is, is going to replace a good chunk of it again. Because then my other concern is if we have been accepted to MSBCA.
MSBA.
MSBA, thank you, I always say MSNBC, MSBA. So we'd have to pay for a feasibility study. And we want to think about, do we want to have that from stabilization? Or do we want to do a debt exclusion or an override? And I don't know how much that's going to be yet, but that could be anywhere from 250 to 500,000. I think people would prefer to take that as stabilization too. But if we do the road and then stabilization, then our general stabilization would be empty if it was the 500 plus 300. We don't want to do that. We need rainy day money, just in case.
Yeah, and that feasibility study won't be until a fall timeframe, not this annual town meeting. So it'll be coming up in the fall.
Yes.
270 days. So we don't know the amount, I don't think they know the amount, but that'll, that process is ongoing right now.
Yep.
And on the, like, if you just use the 100, so it's 74 grand is what the rap funds are, which are, need to be used by the end of this fiscal year. Can be used for the, you know, Old Chestnut Hill Road. And he hasn't used much of his budget to date of his materials. So between the two, there's 100 grand, then yes, there's a road for 300. And Brian's been very good at maintaining and using his Chapter 90 funds, and that comes in at 110 grand a year as well. So maybe accumulating a couple of years, I don't know what he's got in the bank at this point, but that's how he's paid for, like, he paid for Grove Street, for example.
And then Orchard.
Fisher Street, and I think, and Orchard, I think he probably, yeah. So anyway, there's that in addition to existing resources.
Okay.
So we'll talk more.
Yeah, but we'll talk more on Wednesday, and then maybe we can see, it's getting, he's very busy, so it's just hard to get me. So I thought, you know, I'll just see if he could meet. And then Peter and I, he's like, yeah, I can meet Wednesday afternoon too. I'm like, great. So we'll do that. So we'll do that. And then we'll see if he can come to another meet, or, you know, the same thing, Peter and I would be like, here's what he thinks and all that, the good stuff, so, okay. All right, so, public forum?
Full room.
I know, full room. Peter, people are beating down to make announcements, but I don't see anything there. Any announcements, Peter?
No, I don't have.
Okay, and then correspondence, have over here?
So just in your file there is the letter from Worcester Regional Retirement System. So they approved an additional 2% cola on top of the 3% cola for one year. And this memorandum, in order for them to do that, they need, I forget what it is, some percentage of all of the towns in the, 34 of the towns approve it, out of how many towns, I don't know, in it. So you don't necessarily have to take any action or approve this. But at some point in the future, you might, to the extent they're looking for that specifically, okay? You might not want to approve it. I mean, if you wanted to not approve it, this would be, you could take that vote and that could be put forward, right? So maybe you want to just read that a little bit further and think about what you might want to do. If you want to put it on another meeting, we can do that.
I'd prefer to table it, but I don't know if Andrew and Richard want to vote on it, we can vote on it. We do have to do what I say. You want to table?
Table it.
Table it, okay, we'll see what happens next, okay. Minutes, I did review the minutes and I did not see. Table it. Okay, we'll see what happens next. Okay. Minutes? I did review the minutes and I did not see any issues. But Andrew, my eagle editor, who's been promoted to eagle scout editor.
So if you recall on the December 5th one, it was just to change the order of the last two motions noted because it was, it was reversed. It had, you, Andrew, you made the motions and Richard seconded them. Everything else was the same. That was the only change to that. And then the January 3rd meeting, you'll just note that Sherri's now doing these minutes for us and, uh, she did a fine job.
Very good job.
My edits were, uh, limited, so, uh, uh, and she did it in a reasonable timeframe, so I'm happy with that. And she'll be watching every word we say here with bated breath as she prepares the minutes for this meeting.
We should tell her a joke every meeting so she can have a little giggle. I know.
I wouldn't want that responsibility.
No.
I'm good with no taking.
Any issues? Are we good to approve them? Okay. So looking for a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
Do we wanna do them combined or separately? Does it matter?
I don't think it matters.
Uh, so I'll make a motion to approve the December 5th, uh, 2022 meeting minutes and the January 3rd, 2023 meeting minutes.
Looking for a second?
A second.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Okay. Okay, if you wanna sign that in. Um, selectmen reports? So I guess, um, wanted to say three things. So for me, so one is, because when I met with some of the department heads, um, they were mentioning that people are posting things on Facebook, which I think is good, like to kinda get conversation going and some discussion. But I think one thing the community needs to realize is Facebook is not an official channel. So for example, if someone's speeding down the street and they're driving like a maniac and you put them on Facebook, I can tell you for sure Chief Coop is not on Facebook. See, he's not. So you need to call the police station or you need to pick up the phone and, um, or like get his email. He checks email. Um, you can call Peter, but you, like, I can assure you, Chief Coop is not on Facebook. So you really need to make sure that you call him. Um, and I just see someone complaining about speeding and things like that. And we live in a hilly community, like you, you need to hit your brakes, like going down hills and things like that. So for example, I've taken a left, a right down there onto Lincoln Street and it's very hilly. And I hear if you don't ride your brake, you could get up to 35 miles an hour or more and the speed limit's 25. So you need to ride your brake basically to stay at the speed limit. So that's what it is. That's what you need to.
The highest speed we have in town is what, 25?
It's 40 on 122, like over.
Oh.
Or state road. The Millville roads are 25.
25, it's 30 on Chestnut Hill a little bit. Um, Old Chestnut Hill Road is 20. I knew that when I drove down it. Um, but yeah, everything, if you keep it between 25 and 30, you're gonna be okay. It's like 20 on Berthelaway and 20 on Old Chestnut Hill Road. And then everything else is 25 or 30. So as long as you're, like, I don't know, I don't think you'll get pulled over for going 27. I think they'll probably.
Well, between that.
But don't quote us on that.
But don't quote us on that. And you can't get pulled over if you're going 27 and 25.
Between the pedestrians and, and a lot of line spots, it's really hard to go that fast.
You can't really drive fast. It's in, and the state of some of the roads, like, if you go fast, like, you're gonna hurt your car.
Oh, yeah.
So, but if you go the speed limit, you won't hurt your car.
Call those reverse speed bumps.
Yeah, it's, it's traffic calming, you know, that's Brian's strategy on the road repair. Don't repair, you got traffic calming.
Collaborating with the police chief.
In lieu of speed bumps, yes.
You know, maybe instead of fixing the roads, we can put up a few signs. It might be cheaper, you know, traffic calming.
That's right.
Good idea.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, so I just wanted to mention that. So if you, like, I appreciate that we use Facebook. I use Facebook to communicate as well, but it's really not an official Millville channel. And I know people are not on Facebook that are in leadership positions. So you're gonna have to pick up the phone or email them. So I just wanted to put out that PSA. Andrew?
Uh, I'm all set.
Richard?
I agree with you.
Um, town administrator report?
Uh, okay, yeah. I just mentioned earlier that, uh, Wednesday I have a Metacomet, uh, meeting on the, on the board there, as, uh, folks recall, and they, they do a good job. Uh, and we're dealing with their budget. Millville's piece of it still covered by State 911 is 110 grand. Um, so we're reviewing the budget over there. They've also got their, uh, tra- their, uh, challenges of recruitment and retention. So I shared the Millville model and they've adapted some of that. We're talking about that in executive session. We did the last meeting and we're doing it again this meeting. So, um, it's a, it's a pretty cool place. You walk into this thing, you actually, you, I get a tour and it's like being on the, uh, bridge of the enterprise. It's pretty amazing, the equipment they have there, all, all funded by State 911. Uh, I shared with you some emails and there were some activ-, you know, actions that superintendent sent out, an email, I think, to, you know, communication to all the families and staff. MES Water went bad last week, Tuesday afternoon. I learned of it. I guess that it went bad the week before and they fixed it. But it was still looking bad, discolored, you know? You've got the manganese, maybe iron. Or we have a scientist, Rich Gullik, Dr. Gullik, who works for us and funded through our ARPA funds. And then that, we have the Licensed Engineering Operator, NWSI, Northeast Water Systems, Inc. And so it's interesting to see the two experts talking to each other and, and sometimes I'm the referee in terms of what's the right thing to do. But in any event, a widget broke. It was a backflow doohickey, uh, attached to the nozzle that injects the sodium chloride. It's, it's a, it's a little more complex than just sodium chloride, but the chlorine solution that is used to precipitate out the iron and the manganese by way of the filtration medium. It's, uh, green sand filters. And, uh, be- because the widget failed, it wasn't putting in the, the chlorine. And when, once it was discovered, you know, the o- operator was out there, discovered it, replaced the part and within hour, within an hour had reportedly clean water flowing into the tank. It's a 5,000 gallon tank, actually a 10,000 gallon tank, but they only fill it halfway. So it's got 5,000 gallons of water that had stuff into it. And, and they couldn't drain the tank. I asked that question. They couldn't drain the tank because then they couldn't flush the torch. They have to close the school down. So you got clean water going into, uh, uh, I don't know, I'll call it dirty water, 5,000 gallons. So it's gonna take a while for that to clear out. There are some differences of opinion in terms of the green sand filtration medium, which will be changed out, it looks like, in, uh, the vacation week of February. It's, uh, it, based on what the operator has described, the typical lifespan of the green sand filtration medium is more in the eight to 10-year range. What's in there is less than four years old. So it's prematurely, in my view, the layman's view, uh, deteriorated in its effectiveness. And the scientists, so I'm using different hands here, the scientist would say that they weren't putting in enough high, high enough levels of the chlorine concentration and that therefore diminished the green sand filtration medium frankly, too far to recoup or recover. Because that medium, they constantly flush out, I don't know, how, three, three times a week or some frequent period. In fact, from what I've seen, 60% of the filtered water is actually used to flush the filter. So, I mean, go figure. But in any event, uh, the long-term plan, or the near-term plan, which you've approved ARPA fundings up to a certain amount, is to change the sodium chloride to sodium permanganate. And that then will also avoid the issue of, they call them disinfection byproducts. We've, you know, I've just reminded you a little bit about some of the terminology, um, that comes out of too much chlorine. So that's why the operator wasn't putting enough chlorine, was trying to avoid the chlorine coming out on the other end of the filter and then dinging a notice that has to be put out to families and posted and all that, that gets Mass DEP unhappy. So there's a balance of what the right amount is and doesn't seem they quite had it right. They had too little. But going to the sodium permanganate eliminates all of that issue going forward and is a better solution to do what needs to be done as long as the water doesn't come out pink, which is actually a risk. So. Uh, but that said, we're waiting on, and we're supposed to get it Friday, supposed to get it today. I don't have it yet from the operator, quote, for what it's gonna cost, the cost for that. Um, because we certainly can't say go forward until we know what it's gonna cost. But assuming that what we get is reasonable and within ARPA funding or other funding, uh, availabilities, both here and there, if you will, um, the plan would be to do that in April where there was a corrective action plan back at the end of December submitted by the town to, uh, Mass DEP that had said it was gonna be done in July, subject to funding and blah, blah, blah. The other complicating factor, I'm just, full disclosure, is that that sodium permanganate chemical, uh, there's one principal supplier of that in the United States based out of Chicago area. And their factory burnt down last month. So the operator says there's not gonna be any trouble with the supply chain on that. But that, uh, you know, I, I think the jury's out on that, I guess is the way I would describe it. So that's just some of the factor into what's up. So anyway, it certainly is ugly water. It's the first time I've seen or heard of colored water. We used to have colored water in the restrooms here until we got filtrations going, thanks to the landlord. Um, and it's very ugly. It's not unhealthy. In fact, the Mass DEP, uh, school staff and our scientist and the head of the NWSI met at the school. And while there, our guy Rich, the scientist, turned on the faucet, poured himself a glass of yellow water and drank it. Because it's not, you know, it's not unhealthy, it's just ugly, is really what it is. It's not harmful.
Had a little taste to it, though.
I'm sure it had a little extra kick. That's right.
I wouldn't drink, I wouldn't drink that one.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't either. And I, you wouldn't want, and, you know, as, uh, Dr. DeFalco said, Peter, you wouldn't want your grandchildren drinking this. And he's absolutely right on that one.
Yes, he is.
So that's my MES water story. Um, and it's frustrating for everybody involved, I, I, I will say. Uh, I went to the Mass Municipal Association, had their annual conference. I went for a day in Boston and got to walk, you know, got to attend a few sessions, saw the governor, new governor, the new, you know, the ma- mayor of Boston spoke and all that sort of stuff. But also, uh, attended some informational, uh, sessions that day. And also got to go through the, uh, exhibit area and hook up with our council, as well as other councils, as well as, uh, accounting service providers and that sort of thing. So it was, it was good to, you know, get to talk to folks there in that regard. And to the extent this board wants to reconsider what it does and various service providers, we can do that. Um, and I think there's, you know, a couple of folks that would be well worth speaking to when the time is right, if and when the time's right. Old Town Hall, last Friday, got, uh, engineered, stamped engineered drawings for the, uh, uh, roof structure repair and replacement of trusses and things. So we have that. Uh, this Friday, Jo- and Joe's done a great job coordinating this and meeting with the folks to get in and climb ladders and do stuff. This Friday, he's meeting, uh, with some folks to come in and the output will be, uh, drawings for HVAC and plumbing of the new town hall. So that's, uh, and, and the cost of those two, those pieces are not insurmountable. We're using ARPA funds for that. And then with that package of drawings, we can then go out to do the actual.
Great.
Project itself. So that's, uh, moving along. Capital Committee meeting, um, meets, uh, the end of the month. Uh, we rescheduled the meeting for this Friday, but I'd sent out all the, um, notices to the department as to get their requests in. Uh, next week, I, I'm taking a remote procurement course, uh, which allows me to self-study for a period of time. Then there's one day in June that you go for a final thingy. So that, it's like a four-day course that, uh, so I, that starts, uh, I get the trigger on that next week.
1030B?
Yeah, and, uh, and also the, the piece that I'm, I've had some overview piece of it. Now I'm having the piece that talks about what, what we're gonna do at Old Town Hall, for example. So it's all good. Because the goal is just to get certified as a C Chief Procurement Officer and you gotta take that course. So I'll have had the experience by then and so forth, so. It'll be smarter. So that's all I have.
That's it? Okay, great. Um, items not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to meeting?
Nope.
Okay. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, February 21st, at 20, uh, February 21st, 7:00 PM here. And I guess, looking for a motion to adjourn at 8:25.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Thank you, Richard. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And, uh, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. All right, thank you. Got a lot done tonight.